Let's get started. Stand and say his prayers.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone. Big crowd tonight. Future board meetings, subject change on the March 8th. I'll think about that tonight. February 22nd, March 8th, and March 22nd. As of right now, 6 o'clock all here. We have no revisions to the agenda, so we can start with public recognition. We have a recommendation to approve a $200 anonymous donation for Southwood Wrestling. That's actually all of our donations tonight. Motion in second to approve the $200 donation for Southwood Wrestling. Would you like to say hi?
Hi.
Okay, school recognition. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Keith Faber and let him drive from here.
Okay. Well, we really appreciate everybody coming tonight. It looks like we have every chair filled, so that's great. Before I forget though, there's a sign up for those people in the meeting. And so when you leave, if you did not sign in, please sign in, okay? Because we want to make sure we have that in our minutes of the meeting. So, we have a lot of students here that we'd like to recognize. And Mrs. Katie Till is the one that actually said, man, this would be great if we could bring them on. Mr. Votal is the one to kind of organize it. So I'm going to maybe just turn it over to both of them. They can flip for who's going to do that. And then we also have Mrs. Shu here too. And so I'll just let them take over, but really appreciate all of you coming. I know you do great things and so we'll go ahead.
I could go to one of the sides.
Yeah, if you go to one of the sides, we can put you on the camera. We have a camera that will move, so we can see you on Facebook Live.
Oh, I might as well go ahead and have Roger and Janet and Pat. Also, Pat Lin is with us tonight.
Yeah, Pat Lin with us too, yes.
Is this where you want us to stand?
That's perfect.
Okay.
Because we can see on Facebook Live, so there you go.
Oh, right.
And the camera above the...
Oh, right here?
Yeah, that's the camera. There you go.
Well, we just want to thank you for allowing us to come and thank these amazing students. And Roger, who is just as amazing for all that they've done. And so I guess before we begin, let's just back up a little bit and explain what's going on? What's going on with, you know, why we want to honor them? So, our committee, Janet, Pat and I, as well as Jenny Ritzma and Ryan Keim, have been getting together to plan a toy drive. It's something that Babe in Wabash County put together a couple of years ago. And Janet and I decided that this was something that we wanted to do again. We know that there is a need in our community. We can see that from the first year that we did it. And Pat was there as well. She helped out. And so we wanted to, we knew that this was something we wanted to do again. And so we have been working hard to put this together. And so, when we, as we're, of course, you know, putting together a large toy drive, it's a lot of work. What we did is we had to clear out the educational spaces in Babe so we could set up the toys. And how the toy drive works is this. We set up the toys like a toy store. So when families come in who are in need of Christmas presents for their children, they're given a certain amount of points. It's 10 points per child. We don't ask questions. You just are given this amount of points. And then they spend these points like it's money. So every toy in the shop has to be individually priced. Has some of these kids know? Because they help price some of these toys. And so the very first year that we did this, why this whole thing came about is, Pat, who is the former director of Our Children Are Our Future, was in charge of distributing the items at the old Youth Services Building. And she had come to me when we were still trying to set up Babe. This was in 2019. Right, my game is late, right?
Okay, so.
2019. 2020, 2020, I think, 2020. And she said, Katie, you know, there are some things I think that you could use for Babe, but I want to tell you that there are all these toys down in the basement of the old Youth Services Building. It used to belong to Operation Elf. Could you use them? And at the time, we were like, eh, you know, I don't know how we could use them, but okay, we'll go ahead and we'll take them. And one thing led to another, and we found out that there was a need. This was in November. We found out that there was a need for Christmas presents. And so that's how the whole thing got started. So we distributed those toys. And like I said, we went ahead and we did it again this year. So these guys came. We had several people. We had people from Bachelor Creek, people from... I mean, just several people come together. But what made this group so special is that they came to help set up. They came during the toy drive, which I want to talk about that here in just a second. And then they came afterwards. So, the toy drive, the week of.
Which is the three days before Christmas.
It's a three day event, and it's right before Christmas. So this is what happened this year. We set up, and I guess we didn't quite know what to expect. We were basing it off of what had happened the year before. And the year before, we served about 400 children. And so that's what we were kind of expecting this year too. And so we, I should also mention that we received our toys from Toys for Tots and Christmas Spirit, as well as several other organizations. And I won't go through those.
Christmas Spirit, extra, they're extra toys.
They're extra toys. Yes, I shouldn't say that they went out and bought toys. They're extra toys.
They're extra stuff.
So, the week of, or that first day, when we showed up to open up the toy distribution, there was a line of people that stretched all the way down Miami Street. I mean, all the way down to the roller tracks, I should say. I mean, it wasn't, I mean, Miami Street's a very long street. But from our front doors all the way down to the roller tracks. And it was freezing cold. I don't know if you remember anything about the weather in December, but it was fairly warm in December, all the way up until the week of Christmas. And it was freezing that day, freezing. And we just didn't have the space in Babe for people to come in, sign up, register, and then stay where it was warm. They would have to come in, they'd register, and then they had to go outside where it was cold because we couldn't allow everybody to go shopping all at once. We stopped the space, and COVID is definitely an issue. And so we, so people were standing outside, and they were freezing. And because we had so many people show up that day, and we weren't prepared for it. I mean, we were calling people, asking like, will you please come in and help? Just, you know, I mean, just, and people dropped what they were doing that day, and they came in and they helped us. We served more children on that first day than we did on all four days of the year before. So the second day comes, and we're thinking, all right, this is the slow day, right? Because last year, that was the slow day. And again, we show up, and there is a line of people. And we're like, okay. And again, we're not prepared for this because this is not what happened last year. I mean, we were, we met several times over, through the summer and fall. We did not anticipate this kind of a need. And so, so we're running things, and my husband's in the back room, and he's the guy who's stocking the shelves and everything. And at some point, I break away, and he looks at, just to check on me, and he said to me, you call people right now because I cannot keep the toys stocked. He said, as soon as I put things on the shelf, they are taking it. He said, they are taking stuff out of my arms. He's like, I mean, it wasn't like they were being rude. It was just that there was just, they were just coming. And, you know, and it was, it was just awesome. And so again, we called people, and they came, and they helped. And so later on that afternoon, I get a phone call from Toys for Tots. And they said, Katie, you are the only site, toy site, that is open in eight surrounding counties. They said, will you please consider opening your doors to more than just Wabash and Miami County? And we will provide toys for you. And I said, yeah, yes, of course. Because when you're in that situation, and you're seeing these families come in, and the stories that you're hearing of, you know, and just, and the gratitude, I mean, it is, it is a really special event to be a part of. I can't quite describe it, you know? And just to know, and people are like, thank you, because I didn't know what I was going to do if you weren't open. So yes, we're like, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna open up our doors. And so those soldiers went out, and they spent thousands of dollars on toys. And they brought us all the toys in an army utility truck. And it was so impressive and so cool to see. And they pulled this truck up in the alley of Babe. And by that time, we had, thankfully, we had all these volunteers there. So they're now unloading it. And there were so many toys that we couldn't find spaces in Babe to put, to fill all of these toys, to put all these toys. And we have a rental space, and so we had actually opened up, and I hope that he's not listening. Because we had to open up his rental space just to store all of these toys. And, I mean, the blessings just poured out, and we just knew that God was providing for us. And I mean, it was just, you know, it was incredible. And so, my daughter Aubrey, she's a junior at Wabash. She had been there the whole time, and she was observing this. And she said to me, you know, Mom, you know, as I'm looking at these toys, I'm thinking, this is a sign. I mean, and I know this is, this is a very obvious sign, but we're just all in this mode of just keep going for it, keep moving for it. She said, I think that God is telling us that people are going to come. And we had people lined up the first day. We had people lined up the second day. She goes, we need to be prepared for that third day, you know, because we know we're not. And I'm like, yeah, I mean, this is my 17-year-old, you know? And I'm like, yes, thank you. You're right. So I call Roger. He's the guy, the first guy I just thought of. And I'm like, Roger, I need help. And I, you know, I'm like, this is what's going on. You know, people are coming, and they're standing outside, and they're freezing. And I'm talking, some of these people don't have coats. Some of these people are bringing their kids. They're not supposed to bring their kids. And their kids don't have, again, we have, we have coats. We have, we have all this stuff. So we're trying to offer these to these people, but like I said, they don't, they don't, they don't. It's just the need. This is, this is the fact of what we're, what people have. And some of the people that in Wabash have, and what they don't have. And I, but I said, we can't allow people to continue to stand outside. And he said, I'm on it. And he called, so his church is the Wabash Christian Church, which is our neighbor right across the street, to call the pastor. And by that evening, he had it set up that when people would come over and register, they would be able to go right over to the church, and they would have a warm place to sit and stay until their number was called, and they could come in and go shopping.
And donuts.
Well, that was, I was getting that, I was getting that. I know, because that, that just goes to show how amazing, because we didn't ask for any of that. He took it one step further. And instead of just offering a place to stay, he's bringing coffee and donuts and volunteers. And a lot of these kids, and they were there that third day, and they were helping us communicate so that way we could, you know, get shoppers in and out. They're carrying stuff for people. They're watching kids. Because again, kids are, I guess I didn't say this. Kids are not supposed to be coming to the toy drive. But some people don't have childcare. You know, some people have special needs kids, and they don't have childcare, who can take care of their special needs children. And so these guys are helping with all of that. And, I mean, it was just, it was amazing. And they just filled in where we needed them to fill in. And, and then Roger said, you know, I mean, if you can imagine after three days of all of this, how the whole place looked. And three days, and I should say, I forgot to mention, by the time that we were done with the toy drive, we had served 834 children. It was double what we served last year. 834 children. And so you can imagine then what the place looked like. We literally, we were so tired. It was the day, it was the day before Christmas Eve. We just dropped what we were doing, and we just left. And so, but Roger, before that, Roger said, hey, I'm gonna get together a group of students, and we're gonna come in here, and we're gonna help you clean. I mean, and that was like, that was, I can't even describe how awesome that was because I didn't know how I was going to do that, obviously. It took us days to set the, weeks. We had workdays, workdays on how to set this whole thing up. I didn't know how I was going to get this whole thing cleaned. So, the first week that you guys were back in school, kids came on Tuesday. And they, I mean, these kids were amazing. They're like machines. And they just, I said, look, this is what we need to do. They looked at that list, and they just all found their place, and they just sprung into action. Kids were putting things away. Kids were cleaning, kids were cleaning our bathrooms, right? I know. It was awesome. They were breaking things down, and then they're taking stuff over. And the Christian church is storing all of our toys for us. And so they're taking stuff across the street. We broke down everything and put it away and cleaned it in a matter of a couple hours, and nobody, I mean, there wasn't a lazy bone in this group. They all worked. They all pulled their weight, and they all did an amazing job. I don't know what, obviously, I just don't know what I would have done without them. And so I just think that you guys need to...
Appreciate that, Katie. Janet, you want to mention anything, or Pat, or Mr. Votal, or?
I just think Mr. Snyder, because I knew she needed help, but I said, let me see what Mr. Snyder will allow us to do. And he put, he responded quickly before we left that day. I said, I'm gonna come down here and help you. And I figured I'd get the kids to come. That must load.
Well, it's great to have the students getting involved in community service and appreciate them. I think, like we put on the agenda, we have students from the Key Club because Mr. Votal is a Key Club sponsor. Also from National Honor Society because he's the National Honor Society. You gonna coach something next year, too? So anyway, why don't, why don't we have the students just introduce themselves and just tell us what grade you're in, and maybe what club you're in, or if you're in both of those, or how you got involved in this, so?
Kyle Nguyen, I'm a senior, and I'm in both Key Club and National Honor Society.
Tori Graff, I'm an 11th grader, and I'm in Key Club.
Pocun Stow, I'm a junior, and I'm in...
Natalie Keller, I'm a junior, and I'm in both Key Club and National Honor Society.
I'm Avery Schreter, I'm in Key Club and National Honor Society, and I'm a junior.
I'm Lily Hogs, I'm a junior, and I'm in both.
Claire Thompson, I'm a junior, and I'm in both.
I'm Shelley Macy, I'm a freshman, and I'm in Key Club.
Well, again, we appreciate you guys coming. And we could thank Mrs. Katie Till for, you know, she said, man, we'd love to be able to recognize these students. And we do have a recognition part that we will continue on after this presentation to recognize some other things, so really appreciate that. You are welcome to stay for the meeting. I know you might be a little tired. This is your first day back after our winter, spring break. It was unplanned, but we had it, so let's give them one more round of applause.
Can I just say one more thing before I...
Yeah.
One of the things that I noticed in all of this is just how much these guys love their teacher. And I think that speaks volumes about Mr. Votal and how he is with these kids. And, I mean, just, I'm an outsider, I mean, I know Roger. Wow, you know, how awesome. I mean, just, you know, it just speaks volumes of what you are to these kids. And, you know, just as a community, just a, just a community person being able to see that and how they, how they talk to you, and how they're always like, Mr. Votal, look at this, you know? And, and just, you know, including you. And, I mean, you can just really tell how much you mean to these kids and all this stuff that you're doing. It's gonna make me cry. Thank you, thank you for all you're doing.
Yep. Definitely appreciate Mr. Votal. Thanks again for coming, so.
Can we hand out our goodies?
Okay, go ahead.
They, they can have a choice, or you can just, yeah.
All right, guys, well, thanks. You can stay here if you feel ill. So we'll have a little intermission here. Welcome back. Oh, yeah. Maybe I'll hope for a full day tomorrow. I said, we hope it's a whole day.
All of us in school, we was hoping that was a whole week, you know?
All right. Let them get out of here. All right. Mr. McDaniel, we'll let you go ahead and share your recognitions, and then I will also finish the other schools, and then we'll save the best for last for our spotlight, so.
I would like to congratulate Replin Swisher, who is now Replin Geyer. Graduated last year, 2021, making Dean's List with 4.0 GPA in her first semester at Ivy Tech Kokomo. So way to go. Whenever I see those postings from parents on social media, try to grab those and put those on the board, good news. And so if I missed anybody, it's not intentional. So, the moms and dads out there, if they, if they want me to put that on the board, good, good news. I'm definitely, that's a mission to me. Would also like to congratulate Southwood Late Nights on a solid season this year. Very, very good historic season. Unfortunately, lost in the first round of sectional basketball to Northfield. Played a competitive game, final score is 53 to 50. The final record was 12 to 11, and they won the counting tournament for the first time in school history. So very, very momentous historic season for Late Nights. Would also like to say thank you to Mr. Stetter and Mrs. Johnson. They are our student congress advisors and our student congress members for organizing this year's snowball dance. I had a big cafeteria a couple of weeks ago on Saturday night. A big thank you goes to our chaperones. Had a good turnout. Kids had a lot of fun. There might have been a principal dance that passed. Evidence of that was destroyed maliciously, so.
All right, thank you, Mr. McDaniel. And we'll continue on. From Northfield, Mr. Snyder shared that official Jack Urban at the Rochester game last Friday gave Jake Alderman an exemplary behavior report. The official reported that throughout the game, Jake retrieved the ball and got it to the officials. He was very even tempered and in control of his emotions in a game that both teams played hard. He had a great attitude. A.D. Moore presented Jake with an IHS double A sportsmanship pin prior to Saturday's game against Castings. Thanks for leading by example and for your great sportsmanship, Jake. I enjoy Jake. He's on my superintendent advisory team too, so. And also from Northfield, congratulations to Northfield Wrestler Wrestling on a great season. Special congratulations to senior Jayne Goshert on winning his second sectional. Got runner-up regional, which qualified him to compete at semi-state on this coming Saturday at Fort Wayne. Also from Mr. Snyder, happy school counseling week this week to all of our MSDWC school counselors. Continuing on, he also thanks the NHS custodians Rod Norman, Mike Arwood, and Lisa Goshert. We have a new hire that started last week at Northfield, but they have went the last month or more working extra between the three of them to keep things clean at Northfield. Thanks for all you do to keep the school clean and looking great each day. Mr. Boone at Southwood Elementary would like to thank New Song Church for their very generous donation of several food items to a family who had expressed a need last week. The timing of our becoming aware of the need, and New Song reaching out to us to see if they could help in a way was perfect. We are grateful for community partners who are also deeply about students and families. Also from Mr. Boone, February 7th through 11th, what we already talked about, the National School Counseling Week. At Southwood Elementary, we recognize and celebrate one of our very best, Mrs. Valerie Wall. Mrs. Wall works hard to help students, families, and coworkers operate at their maximum potential in our school community. This happens in a variety of ways. Social skills groups for students, making connections with community partners who want to help in the school community, organizing College Guild Week and Red Ribbon Week activities, to name just a few. Thank you, Mrs. Wall. And Mr. Boone also was thankful for the efforts of the snow removal crews over the past week. We especially want to thank maintenance and custodial teams for our extra work outside to prepare sidewalks, playground, and parking areas for safe travel on foot. We appreciate the extra time and attention to make sure everyone is safe. And I believe, I'll make sure to get through all of them. I believe that is it. And I need one minute because I did not get my sack that's in this other room at last. Run, run.
See if he can do it.
Need a little music.
Intermission.
Yeah.
Well, it's sitting in the other room, nothing happened.
They hit it, actually, so I don't know.
We thought he got longs.
It was like, it's like Christmas or something, so. All right. Our main event tonight, we were going to have Mrs. Amy Long come up here and Beth Egan. So first of all, we do want to congratulate our spotlight tonight. As listed in our agenda is Amy Long, and Beth Egan nominated her. So I would turn it over at this time to Mrs. Egan.
Thank you. At the beginning of the school year, we were one office secretary short. And Amy wore many, many hats at the beginning of the year. Not only was she a school secretary and school nurse, she took care of attendance and many, many other things. And she always had a smile on her face when she was doing it. She is always happy. She's always had a smile on her face. I'm sure there were times when she's not happy, but we would never know that.
But her daughter's not on the camera, right?
She's always willing to go the extra mile to help someone out. And I can speak her personal experience to that. She has been a cheerleader for me as I have continued my recovery from cancer. And she, she's just always willing to do whatever anybody needs. Couple of weeks ago, I, on a personal note, I had, was coming back from Fort Wayne. I'd had a treatment in Fort Wayne on a Monday. And I always come back from my mom's on Tuesday morning. And as I went out to the car on Tuesday morning, I fell on the ice. And so I contacted Mr. McDaniel, letting him know I was gonna be a little bit late. And when I got to school, I pulled up, and Amy came out, and she was like, do not get out of the car. And she assessed to make sure that I was really okay. But in the meantime, kids are coming into school, and she is being a cheerleader for them, saying, welcome to Southwood, come on in, let's get that learning going. And so not only was she there to help me, she was welcoming the kids to the school that morning. And that's just what we see out of Amy every single day. She is always, always, always there for us. And I just wanted the community to recognize her and thank her for everything she does. We are definitely honored and privileged to have Amy as a member of Southwood Field. Thank you.
Please give her a round of applause.
I just love my job.
Love your job.
I just love my job.
And it's, we're in a very unique situation. We've never had this, I don't think, in our history of MSD of the last 60 some, well, over 60 years, of having a secretary slash nurse. So like Mrs. Egan says, she can do it all there during that time, so we appreciate that. Mr. McDaniel, did you want to share anything else?
Yeah, you know, we got to know Amy 10 years past as a substitute nurse, and we knew her as somebody who was spunky and... And we knew her as somebody who was spunky and fun and, and just an all around great person. And so this year, uh, like Beth said, she's done so many different things to help out. Uh, she's meticulous. She has an excellent work ethic, just gets through things. Uh, and she's just fun to be around. And so we, we are very, very blessed to have her.
Thank you.
So on behalf of MSD and our sponsor, which is First Family Bank and Trust, we have, um, a little gift for you. But we do always ask that you read it out loud because I'll have another thing I want to say real fast.
Okay. Congratulations, because you have dreamed big and worked hard. We figured you might like a soft place to rest. Thank you for doing what you do so well. Staff spotlight.
So inside there. There's a nice soft blanket in there. Mr. McDaniel, though, we need to make sure he understands that that's not necessarily for school time, so, all right. It's pretty nice, so.
Yeah, I'll have to hide it from him.
Yeah, that's right. Thank you very much. Um, before you go, though, we do need to have a picture of Mr. Big's outfit here. And I can do that or I can do that, if you can, for the two of them. Shaking hands or doing whatever that we can do. We'd like to put that on there.
Thank you.
Can you, can we go out there? Just a second. All right. You guys can stay if you want, but obviously you can leave, just like I said, an email. So we'll see you later. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Dr. Kuhn is out, so we'll just skip past the public comment for agenda items only and.
Yeah, wait for a second. I actually said six forty-five, so I'm, I'm just real early. Yeah, so. Yeah, you can run faster. We're on public comments. Public comments.
Oh, public comments.
Yes, see if there's anything.
Uh, there's not.
No, okay.
So we'll move to the consent agenda items. Uh, approval of minutes from our previous meeting on January twenty. I'd like to, like.
Second.
Motion and second for approval of minutes from our last meeting on February twenty. Claims.
So we need to accept those.
Second.
Motion and second to accept claims on February twenty. Payroll.
Nothing out of the ordinary for payroll.
Motion to approve that, uh, payroll. Motion and second for to approve payroll on February twenty. Okay, Dr. Kuhn, financial summary.
Financial summary, just, uh, showing you end of the month for January and where our balances are. Uh, you can see where we ended in that first column, uh, of twenty twelve, or twenty twelve, twenty twenty-one. Uh, and then so where we're at, how that balance changed just over that first month period. Next board meeting I'll have some cash flow, uh, updates and, uh, estimates, uh, for the remainder of twenty twenty-two. So, um, nothing out of the ordinary with, with the, uh, end of the month report.
Moving on to personnel. Under resignation, we have Melissa Carwell, cook at Metro North. Under employment, we have Deborah St. Clair, long-term sub at White's. Cynthia Harmon, long-term sub teacher at, uh, Sofford Elementary. And Matthew Schmidt, long-term sub teacher at Sofford Elementary. And termination number, employee number one thirty-six, uh, effective, uh, last month.
Just maybe a little more explanation on the long-term subs, uh, long-term substitute teachers. Uh, something's in the water this year or, or about nine months ago. So that's why we have several long-term substitutes, so.
I think we've had, we're going on seven returning.
We just heard of another one too. Is this, have you kind of the one that we just heard about? Number eight, seven or eight?
Motion and second to approve personnel on February twenty. All right. For, uh, Hartland Career Center report, you have one, of course. Superintendent's report.
Yes, I just wanted to share, I don't know, go ahead. It's, look at that. It's a multiple times. That's real, okay. Um, I just want to share, we haven't had a COVID nineteen update, which I'm not really gonna mention that as much because we don't have a lot to share with that, which is very good. Uh, but I wanted to have, I asked the principals, uh, to give attendance for today, um, since we've been out of school for a while. And, uh, of the six schools, we had edu, seven educational staff that were absent all day. Um, that would be, you have to think about how many teachers that we have and how many staff. And when I say educational, I, that doesn't include our, obviously, our bus drivers and our tech and our, you know, cooks and custodians and, and food service, things like that. But, um, it does the educational staff of, um, even at White's and also with the instructional paraprofessionals and teachers. So anyway, um, really good, um, not very many at all for the whole corporation. And then of the five schools, did not include White's in this one, but I did have the principals respond. We had a hundred and six students that were absent all day. So out of, um, the students that are in that, those five schools, that's a attendance rate of ninety-four percent. If we would have ninety-four percent of the year, it would almost probably be a four star, um, for the whole, um, uh, whole state because that's, that's a very good percentage. And so, um, maybe not a four star because actually a four star would be closer, probably ninety-seven, ninety-eight. But still, with all of other situations happening, that's very good. So I guess I just want to say that's a positive, um, for us and, and hope it, hope it continues. So just kind of want to share that. And I asked the principals just to let me know by the end of the day what that was.
Mr. Break is on. Anybody got phone for our.
I would just tell you, one, one thing that, um, we were, last year at this time, we brought in NWA scores, but we just had those finished. So next meeting, I'm sure he'll have a report on that. Um, he's, um, excuse him to go watch his son play in the RRC tournament, uh, starts tonight. Um, hopefully it will not be, uh, their last game, but they're playing a very good team and they have a good record too. So I excuse him from tonight too, so we could watch him play. And so there's nothing on that. But there should be something about, um, our NWA test scores, um, next meeting, which our next meeting is interesting. It's two twenty-two, twenty-two. Should have a cake or something.
Okay, moving on to recommendation, new business. We have a recommendation to approve the out-of-state field trip for Northfield High School's acapella choir and trombone choir to the Choir Festival Music of the Parks at Kings Island Amusement Park in Ohio on May thirteenth and fourteenth of this year. Motion and second to approve the out-of-state field trip for the Northfield Choirs on February twenty. Recommendation to approve an extended field trip for the Northfield Key Club to the Key Club District Leadership Convention at the Indianapolis Airport Crown Plaza, March fourth through sixth of twenty twenty-two. I need to approve.
Second.
Recommendation to, and, uh, yeah, so, motion and second to approve the recommendation to approve the, uh, extended field trip for the Northfield Key Club on February twenty. Recommendation to approve the overnight extended field trip for Sharp Creek Sixth Grade to Camp One Hour, uh, in Sharp, uh, so, excuse me, in Silver Lake, Indiana, May eighteenth to twentieth of this year. I got ahead of myself. I'm trying to get to that pizza out there. Motion and second to approve the overnight extended field trip for Sharp Creek, later this year in May, all in favor, say aye. We have no unfinished business, uh, no board policy with, uh, some of us. Public comment on any item?
There's nothing.
Nothing? Okay. Any items from board members? I don't know, recently, I think I've got to line up, but, okay, so let's, we're adjourned.